I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, January 3rd, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pleasurable allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here to serve you and to serve the citizens of this fine community. We pray that you give the council, staff, and audience wisdom to address wisely all of the issues facing it tonight on a very busy agenda. We thank you for the opportunity to have this opportunity to serve you with all these different issues. We ask these things in your name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
And we're going to go to presentation and proclamation. And tonight, I want to recognize former Aransas Pass Mayor Adon Eloy Chapa passed away December 18th, 2022, at the age of 50. He served as mayor from 2013 to 2017. As a lifelong resident of the Aransas Pass, Adon was very passionate about the well-being of the community and his citizens. He also had a profound admiration for veterans and first responders. During his tenure as mayor, Adon made a point of meeting with as many citizens as possible and worked hard to address all issues brought before him. It is an honor to be elected Aransas Pass mayor, and he treated it as such. Adon Chapa brought years of dignity and respect to this important position. He will be missed by his family and the residents of our city. And now, we're going to go to the consent agenda. All of the following items in the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless the council member's request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda when we consider separately.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 29th special meeting.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I'm going to open up public hearing on case number PG 2211-18. Public hearing, our preliminary plat application for a major subdivision requested by Seema and Steve Incorporated to develop a 34 single-family dwelling lots being the property with legal description portion of Farm Lot 2, Land Block A, Burton and Dance Forest subdivision, 9.72 acres, and Wilkie Estates Block 1 lots, 1 R, 4.29 acres. Currently zone is R10 single-family dwelling district.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This application has, in previous times, has come before you. It's the same lot. Applicant has hired a new engineer, and they have revised their old plan that you approved previously, and they are now coming up with a 34 single-dwelling lots. It was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted 4 to 3 in favor of the application. As of now, the neighborhood has some issues still with this project. However, based on the new set of plans that they have submitted, it looks as if they have resolved a lot of the previous issues. Right now, Public Works Department is undergoing a lot of revamping the area with manholes, and that is going to help a lot with the issues that the neighborhood has been complaining about. The Public Works Director is here, and he can, if you like, he can throw some light on what is going on for the SEWA and drainage system within the vicinity. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Do you have any specific questions or do you just report?
Just say whatever we're going to correct as far as the issue they had about the...
Sure. I have been to a lot of these meetings. I've heard the concerns. One of the concerns is when it rains, the backflow of the sewage. What I want everybody to understand that that's not a Saunders-Beesley problem, that's a citywide problem. So whenever there's rain, our wastewater plant actually gets pretty backed up. So we're trying to find solutions how to fix that, but part of a solution too is actually to reduce the infiltration from our sewer system to our treatment plant. So if you notice during these dry days, we normally don't have too many complaints. You know, the plant runs efficiently, nobody's toilets are really backing up, but as soon as we get rain, that's when we get most of the complaints. Well, when it rains, it doesn't mean that people are flushing their toilets more. It means that we get rainwater, groundwater going into our drainage syste-- our sewer system, backing up our plant, and the whole city is suffering through this. So one solution is actually to reline our manholes. So we have about 250 brick manholes in the city. So TCQ does not allow brick manholes anymore. So these are grandfathered in, these were probably put before most of us were even in office or in this job. But one solution is to actually reline those manholes. Well, we actually already received the machinery that we need for this manhole relining. So it's already at our yard. We're going to get some proper training by the professionals, the vendor, on the third week of January. So I've already instructed my crew that we're going to get training at the Saunders and Beasley area and try to work our way downstream. So that is where we're going to get the training. It will be done while we're being supervised by the vendor, and in a nutshell, that'll actually start helping the process. It's not going to light the world on fire. I wish I could say the first five manholes we're going to do, you're going to see a huge difference. No, this is a citywide problem. So we have 250 manholes we have to tackle just to reduce the infiltration. Doesn't mean that's a complete resolution to the problem. It's just a step forward to progress. So that one, we will have training, like I said, the third week of January, and we will go to that area first.
Okay, and we have how many manholes, like 280?
250 brick manholes, yeah.
And they're all going to be done, relined from the inside to take care of most of the problems that we've been having as far as overloading the sewer?
Yeah, we have a three-year plan. Our plan is to do 80 manholes a year. So we did hire two additional crews to do that. We already have the machinery. All we need is the proper training, and once we get the training, then it'll be to our discretion to do as many manholes as we can throughout the year. And our goal is to hit 80 for the next three years. 80 times three, 240. So we've got to squeeze 10 more in there, really, but...
So that's actually a good thing, citywide.
Yes.
This is...
And even if we weren't getting this development, this is still something
Exactly.
we're pursuing of you. On the record, we actually, I actually presented this back when we did the budget, during our budget phase. So everybody, I think all five council members put a sticker for that relining system. So this was way before the subdivision was even brought forward. So we were preemptive. It just happened to be the timing that they're asking now, but I know all five of you guys were in support of relining the manholes.
I have one question. Is the street that goes down the center of the subdivision, will it be opened up to Beasley and Rhodes? Will it have access to both? Okay, so it'll be a...
Yeah, it'll be a city street. It's fitting the standards that we have in our drawing manual.
Okay.
That's online.
Okay. One picture, it just looked like it went to Beasley and...
No, it goes both ways.
Okay, goes to both. Okay.
Any other questions?
My name is Jerry Wellman. I live at 1869 South Saunders, which is at the corner of Beasley and Saunders. And when, just by way of note, when my sewer backs up after I put a pop-up valve so it didn't back up in the bathtub, is not when it rains. It's when the apartment building down the street uses a lot of water, and it can't flow down the street, and it backs up in my yard, and the city people know when I call just to bring the vacuum truck and suck it out. Now, what I, about the development in question, the drainage is the problem. Beasley and Saunders is a bowl. No matter which way you look, it's uphill, except for where it go, and it is supposed to drain toward those apartments and down Saunders, and then turn behind Mario Dovla's house and the trailer park. But it can, and they have a ditch there, but then the ditch is backed up with county property, and it's gonna have to have drainage, or we're gonna continually be here. And no matter what they do with this, they're just, it used to drain into the ground better, but every time we put a roof, concrete streets, it gets worse. It started when they paved Beasley about 15 years ago. Used to be a gravel road, and we didn't have that, but you couldn't drive down the gravel road when it flooded. And then they built that other subdivision, that new subdivision, I can't think of the name of it, and when this one comes in, it's even going to be worse. If you don't fix the drainage, we're just going to have that problem. I recommend that you table this development or postpone it until you fix the drainage.
My name is William McGraw. I live directly across Rhodes Avenue from this development at 930 West Rhodes. This has come up before the council numerous times before with varied results, but the problems are all still the same. There is no storm drainage on roads. It's all natural drainage, never has been. We just now see some storm drainage going in on Johnson because of the problems we've had for it. Okay? The development as it stands, the previous two iterations had drainage ponds in them. The new plan has no drainage ponds. Don't ask me how that goes through. I'm not a civic engineer, but it sure sets off alarms in my head because I am on the downhill side of this property. The whole zoning's inconsistent with our neighborhood. We're all on 2 and 1/2 to 10 acre lots. They're going to put these on 15,000 square foot lots. This is not the way that neighborhood was originally designed and developed, and we don't want it. As you see, it's opposed by the residents, by the showing here tonight. We don't want this. The water's inadequate, the power's inadequate. We know the sewage is inadequate because we've seen it back up without these 35 more houses, and there are probably less than 35 houses on that sewer line right now, and we're going to put 35 or 34 more houses on it. You know, that's a disaster waiting to happen. The water lines were just replaced, but whether they'll take 35 more houses than the nine houses that are on roads right now, I sincerely doubt. There's no natural gas on roads, but I'll bet you there's going to be natural gas in these nice new homes. Now, why do the existing residents not get natural gas piped into their homes? Because the city doesn't want to pay for it. But I'm going to be watching real careful to see who pays for that natural gas line to be put in from Saunders up to that development in Rhodes. This is just asking for trouble, and I think we're going to have trouble, and we've said it a million times before. And all of you here tonight, you know, need to really vote your conscience on this thing because you don't want to be like, you know, some governments in 2022 and sell out your citizens to big business. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name's Richard Myers. I live at 1868 Saunders. I live across the street from Mr. Wellman. I've dubbed my house the Saunders Ground Zero. I'm not exactly sure what happens down at the Rhodes end, but I can tell you for sure what happens at my end. The development, I'm not as adamantly opposed to as some other people in this, because we need development. I worked for municipality for 30 years. I understand we need tax base. I get all that. What I'm asking for from city council is for you guys to take care of the citizens who are already here, who already pay taxes, and who already know that there's a problem there. If we put 34 more homes on with the current plan, all this is going to do is exacerbate what's going on right now. I've been to all the planning and zonings for this. I've been to all but one city council meeting for this proposed plan. You guys know there's a problem. You guys know there's a problem, I believe you live in the area. Um, there's, we all know it's there. I think this latest plan from the developer is the best plan that we've seen yet. Is it perfect? I don't think we're ever gonna, we're not gonna satisfy everybody in this room. So my big beef is, we need the sewer to be fixed. I appreciate the city doing something about it proactively, um, that's a three-year plan. That doesn't, and we've already, we were just told today, again, that only, that's just a percentage of what the whole system needs. We're still not talking capacity. Mr. Wellman says the sewage backs up in his yard, literally, it's pretty disgusting. It's happened more than once. So my, my proposal to you is to table this, let's do an engineering study to see what we need for drainage, the only thing I hear out of planning and zoning, and the only thing I've heard from city council meetings so far, is we don't have the money. There's proposed thirty-four more houses, let's take the revenue from those if you're going to approve it, and let's pass a bond. Let's do a capital improvement, let's get rid of the drainage, let's take care of everybody's problems in here. There's some problems that we're never gonna agree on, traffic, whether, five acre lots, I have a third acre lot, so I, I can't empathize with a five acre lot. So we're, we're all kind of in a different dynamic in this whole idea. The city needs to fix the problems that we know exist. Growth brings problems, we'll deal with those as, as they come along. We need more police, we need more firefighters, we need more, we need everything, right? We can't afford everything, but what we don't need is to flood everybody's houses. And that's what I request from you, is to, to, at a minimum, let's do a, table this, study it, let's see what we need before we say we don't have the money, 'cause it could be a simple fix like a couple bigger culverts. That's thousands of dollars, not tens of thousands. Or it could be millions of dollars, and then we, then we got a real problem. So I just request that you re-table it, and we move on until we know, and do a study until we know what we actually need instead of guessing. That's all, thank you.
My name's John Sample, I live at eighteen, well, I have a home at eighteen fourteen South Saunders. My concern is totally drainage. You're putting more impervious cover. When Harvey came, we had water standing for weeks. Didn't get my house, but it was in my yard. You're gonna put, all you have to do is look at Admiral, which, which is off of Beasley. When it rains, Beasley's a lake. This is gonna be directly across from it. There's gonna be even more water in Beasley, and then the other part will go to Rhodes. I, the only thing I've ever asked is, I know the depth can't be the same, but we have twelve houses on South Saunders. We don't need seventeen behind us. My compromise would be, I just want twelve, I want a lot that looks like my lot, it may not be as deep, but at least there will be something that won't be total impervious cover. There's no place for that water to go. Plus, the houses are gonna be backed up because of the street, because of the restrictions, way closer to my fence than we are to the fence. And so if, if some drainage could be dealt with, I don't know how you're gonna do that, because literally, this is a class action lawsuit waiting to happen. Because it's one thing for FEMA for a hurricane, it's a whole nother thing for the rain to come and come in my house, because I know what I'll do when it does that. Because I lived through Harvey, I didn't get any water. Now, you can't stop development, that's what a city lives. I'm not trying to stop it, all I'm trying to do is not damage the people that are there. If they wanna build seventeen on the other side, they've got some undevelopment behind it, it might hold it. But we've got twelve houses, and I'm telling you, we're gonna get water encroached, but there's no, that's, that land's flat. And, and part of the reason I think they did away with the thought for the retention ponds are, because if you dig down in this, anywhere in this county, it's not a retention area, it becomes a permanent pond, which when it floods, doesn't solve anything. So I wasn't particularly caring about the ponds, 'cause I didn't think it was gonna solve the problem. The problem is the density and the amount of impervious cover, and where that water's gonna go. And I don't want it in my house.
My name is Mary Ann Johnston, I'm the manager of Roadrunner Mobile Home Park at two oh four seven South Saunders. My park is between Beasley and Mooney Lane, and the ditch that all the water on Beasley and Mooney Lane comes to is in my yard. It runs behind Mario Dovela's house, and behind my house, and behind the owner's house, and then it floods the park. So every time it rains, all the water from Beasley and Mooney Lane come to my yard. From the new development, from further up the road, everybody gets a self-pump out and pumps their water into the ditch, and it comes to my place. I don't need any more water. And you put in a new development with no kind of drainage, because it stops behind my place. It does not go any further. The owner behind me won't allow y'all to put the pipe in to put the drainage pipe. So it stops and it floods the park. And then my tenants are walking and having to carry their children through rainwater and sewage water to get 'em to the bus stop. Don't need any more. There needs to be solutions before you add to the problem.
Hector Reels, ten forty-four South Commercial. Davi, didn't you have your core group up here that last meeting, and didn't you all kinda come to a consensus that our present sewer would not support pretty much anything else put on?
Mathematically, it would.
It would?
Yeah.
And mathematically, all, everything? Or mathematically, ten more, mathematically, twenty more?
Yeah, mathematically, it would, it would.
It would hold the other thirty-four? Okay. Um, with that being said, anyway, I, I do think it might be a good idea to go ahead and table this, and, uh, definitely let's see what the eighty per year would do. I mean, to only wait for one more year to see what these eighties with these particular ones in this area, would they be on priority? They would, pretty much, you try to take care of them first?
Yeah, we're gonna get the training there. I don't know if you showed up later or not, but I had mentioned in my presentation that, that the vendor's gonna...
That the vendor's gonna provide some training with the machine that we just received a couple of weeks ago, and the first area we're gonna go with that is right there, is the Saunders and Beasley area, yeah. So we will get trained by the professionals at that area.
That, that would almost sound reasonable, something kinda smart to do, just see what that'll do, table this until then, and, and kinda go from there. You already have tax-paying citizens here. They need to really be taken care of, and I'm not saying they need to be prioritized, but they are existing taxpayers right now, today. So maybe they do need a little bit of priority, making sure that they're taken care of, and making sure that nothing's gonna leak all over the, that's really sad, that the kids are having to be carried by their parents. I mean, that, that's, that's really sad, that's third world. That shouldn't be happening here in the United States, but obviously it is. Uh, so maybe thinking about tabling some things and seeing what, what the results... I know we got a great guy here, so, you know, I have the utmost confidence in, in what he's saying. So maybe we can table this and put it off for a little bit and see what we can do. Thank you for your time.
I've heard a lot of the residents talking about tabling this application. I just wanna put in that, um, with the planning process, this application for subdivision development has two steps. One is preliminary plot, and this is a preliminary, and therefore, any issues that come up, it can be addressed. And then, uh, at a later time, it will come forward as a final plot. So at this stage, when they are talking about, um, tabling a preliminary plot, that is what this preliminary plot is for. So you don't have to table it, it is not the final plot. So my recommendation will be, uh, we pick those issues and approve this preliminary plot, so we work on those issues with the manhole and other drainage issues. I would like the engineer here to come and give you the analysis of the drainage system that you are talking about. Mathematically, we have reviewed it, had several meetings, and it should not be a problem. If you look at the drainage issue from, uh, from the perspective of a layman's view, you, you might conclude that it's going to be a hell of a problem. But engineering-wise, it has been looked at, and that is the best they have provided. So I will, after they have given their viewpoint, I would like to, uh, you let the engineer come and present his viewpoint on that one. Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause what we have right here at hand is not a yes, you can build it, but it's a yes, you can continue researching it and looking at the issues that we have at hand to be able to come up with the loo- the solution of all the issues they have, and put it all together, see if we can make it happen.
Correct.
This is pretty much all we're doing right now, right now.
Correct.
Not giving nobody, no approval of no building, nothing, or anything like, anything else.
We are not even at the building permit stage yet. This is a preliminary plot, after everything that...
It's just to get it started, to see if we can move forward with it.
Exactly.
And see if we can accomplish it with solving all the issues that we have at hand.
Correct. After all those have, have been resolved and agreed upon, this same application will come before the council again as a final plot, and it will go through the same process. So tabling it is like we have now utilized the preliminary plot process approval.
But it's to continue to make sure that we can take care of whatever issues we have...
We can make changes and everything.
Before final approval of what...
Correct.
We're gonna be able to, to approve of whatnot.
Yeah.
Is the engineer here?
Yes.
Okay. Could we hear one more time what...
You wanna come up here?
Can we hear the drainage solution that you have at this time? What is, what is the drainage?
Good evening, mayor, council. Am I loud enough?
Yes.
Hearing, okay, okay. Juan Peralas, Jr., Jay Peralas, Civil Engineering, fifty-eight sixty-six, South Staple Street, fifty-eight sixty-six South Staple Street in Corpus Christi. Um, a lot of the comments this evening, or a lot of the concerns expressed, uh, do pertain to the drainage. So, um, as it was mentioned, uh, by, uh, city staff a little earlier, the drainage plan as proposed currently is a lot different from what you've seen before. The original design included four independent, uh, or what I call classic, uh, design detention ponds, one at each corner of the development. The problems we have with those kind of drainage ponds is related to exactly one of the points one of the citizens brought up a little earlier. Because of the higher water table that you experience in this area, uh, they tend to not dry out, they tend to stay wet all year. And, and as a result, they don't function quite as well as they should as far as capacity and storage. In addition to that, they become duck ponds and are hard to maintain. They become very difficult to maintain because they're wet year-round. So after the owner asked us to, uh, take a look at it, see if there was a better way to build this mousetrap, we came up with a different approach to the drainage, to where we're not gonna use the, the, the classic detention ponds, but instead, we're going to, uh, provide, uh, the, 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 the popular term currently used is bioswell, but it is basically a, a swale along the frontage of all the lots on both sides of the street. So we have a thirty-foot drainage easement set aside, uh, between the street right away and the area where the houses would actually, uh, be built. And that's along the full length of the street, uh, all the way from Rhodes to Beasley on both sides. So by, by doing it this way, we're actually able to have a lot more storage capacity, 'cause we just, we have a, a lot more area to work with. Uh, and by using this approach, uh, we, we're able to keep it a little shallower to where, uh, the maximum depth of the, of the ditch would be three feet. The design capacity is based on only two feet of that depth. So, uh, as staff mentioned, we've, we've gone through the calculations with them, checked them backwards and forwards. So, uh, based on, on the runoff characteristics of the existing property versus the proposed, we should be able to store the, the extra runoff for a hundred-year event. Now, uh, as far as the characteristics of the proposed development, uh, some of the, I heard the comment made, and it was a very intelligent comment, that, well, you're going to increase, uh, you're gonna put in roofs and driveways and so forth, which is, uh, impervious, and increases the runoff rate. But in this case, I mean, the lots are two hundred and nine feet deep. They're fifteen thousand square feet, about a third of an acre. Uh, according to the information we, and we've, uh, looked at from the developer, the typical floor plan is gonna be about twenty-five hundred square feet, and then you add to that another twenty-five hundred square feet for driveway, whatever. So only about one-third of the property is actually impervious surface. So, yes, there will be an increase in the runoff rate, but not what you would see as compared to, say, that other new development on the other side of Beasley. Those are smaller lots, a lot of impervious area, uh, surfaces, so, uh, the, the increase in the stormwater runoff, percentage-wise, is gonna be a lot more for that development as opposed to this one, just because of the size of the lots. Uh, drainage, uh, so that's how we're proposing to, to manage the, the extra runoff there on-site.
So if, if I could just interrupt you for one moment. So what I'm looking at here, to me, looks like this new road, and your extra footage of drain, of runoff drainage, whatever, is just going to be a river.
Well...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, no. At, at, at the ends of the street, it's going to be blocked off, and there'll be a, a pipe that goes through there, like a small covert pipe. Now, we haven't finished...
Go through where? Wait a minute, I live on the other side of that street.
Right. Well, it, it's gonna be, well, uh, the, the previous designs had detention ponds at the four corners. Um, I mean, that's, that's where, what drainage does exist is down, not so much down Rhodes, but mainly Beasley. I mean, what you've heard here, I think, is very accurate description of, of the lay of the land. Uh, the, the, we looked at some of the, we looked at the FEMA flood maps, uh, compared those to the satellite imagery, the Google Earth imagery for that area, and the primary storm water outfall does appear to be kinda down Beasley, then it cuts across some of that property and goes to a big, uh, uh, covert structure underneath three sixty-one, right where it intersects with FM, uh, twenty-seven twenty-five. So what, what I've heard described here matches what we're seeing on the maps. So it, it seems to be an accurate description. So the water does have to get, uh, more to Beasley and less to Rhodes, 'cause Rhodes, there's just no, there's no ditch capacity along Saunders to get from Rhodes to Beasley where the natural lay of the land is. Uh, most of the, hardly any of those driveways have any covert pipes in them. So there's just not, there's...
If you can imagine, and, and this is exaggerating a little bit, imagine a, a dike or a berm at the end of this ditch, and that causes that water to stay in the ditch section and, and hold it there for, for hours and hours. And, and through this berm, we have a smaller diameter pipe. Now, we haven't exactly sized it, but it might be six inches diameter or as big as twelve, something to that felt.
Where would that pipe go?
Into the ditch along Beasley. One would, well, two would go to Beasley.
But on this half, on the north half of the line, you know, where Rhodes is, 'cause I understand it's even drainage on both sides.
Well, originally, that's exact, that's what we originally proposed, but after talking to city staff and, uh, looking at the lay of the land a little better, it's, it's gonna have to be an uneven split, 'cause that's the lay of the land. So a small, smaller percentage will go toward Rhodes, and a larger percentage goes towards Beasley.
Could you give me a ballpark percentage, we're talk, are we talking about ninety ten or sixty-four?
Somewhere in between, I mean, this, this is terrible, I mean, I mean, this is, at this point, it's a guess, as staff was mentioning...
As staff was mentioning, at this point, we have to do more work. And, and if staff acknowledges that, we acknowledge that.
And that's what we're doing, the preliminary, the preliminary start is to be able to have a start, and then figure out where we end up at, and still come back and have the same discussion all over again, and then hear exactly where they got to, and then we say, okay, guys, we can continue, or we can put a stop to it.
But to answer your question, sir, I don't like to leave questions unanswered. Ballpark number, and this is just a rough guess, seventy-five, twenty-five, eighty-twenty, I think eighty-twenty, somewhere in there is what we're gonna see when it's all, when the dust settles and it's all settled.
And what percentage absorption do you have left on the property compared to the hundred percent absorption you've got right now, because it's virgin? Okay? What percentage are, are you gonna have left on the property after the Roads, the rooftops, the driveways, the patios, the sidewalks?
About two-thirds.
Okay, so about sixty-six percent more water than I, I have a flood picture-
No, as the, as the other way, as the other way around. As the other way around. It's sixty, sixty-six percent of land is still gonna be there, and only thirty-three percent of it is gonna have driveways and a house on top of it.
So if, like I was, I mentioned earlier, the, the typical floor plan is gonna be about, about twenty-five-hundred square feet, and then we're allowing that much more? Uh, I think so. Some, my guess is it's twenty-five-hundred, I mean, th- this is, I mean, it hasn't been designed yet.
Well, to get, to get back to the point at hand, what we're doing right now is deciding whether to move forward with the preliminary plat.
Yeah.
And the preliminary plat is the time for you to design this so that it's satisfactory to us.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Because if it's not, this, the, it's not gonna work out.
Correct.
Because we have to be one-hundred percent satisfied. At this time, we're not, but we, we want you to, I mean, I understand what we're doing right now is to get this to where it needs to be, and if they flood-
And see where we end up at, and we'll come back and we'll have the same discussion.
Then are y'all willing to take the responsibility? And leave the city out of the responsibility of the, of their flooding?
Well, we would continue to work with staff and, and working with staff through staff, get input as possible from the residents in the area, because the more anecdotal information we have, the better job we can do.
Okay.
The history, the history is very, very important. I mean, we can do calculations and calculations, but obs- without those observations, they're educated guesses. So we can do our homework-
Yes.
And match that up as best we can with the historical information from the community, and, and work with and through staff, and find the best way to approach this.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I have a question. So that kind of design, it impacts the trees, because trees have to come out for the water if you run, so how does, how is it gonna impact trees? Because in the area, like, does it-
The drainage from the backyard to the street-
Yes.
It's all gonna have to be drainage.
Correct.
To do that, you're gonna have to remove every tree in that acreage.
How many acres?
Every tree.
Well, I, I wouldn't say every tree, I mean, there's gonna be some of the trees that need to come out, be, uh, for the house footprint, the driveway.
The house and the driveway.
But, I mean-
If, if you're gonna have a three-foot swell, you've got to dig that, and those trees there have to come out.
Oh, yes, sir. Along the road, yes. Th- those have to come out. But there, there's gonna be an attempt to salvage as many of the, I mean, the, the real trees, not, not the, not the motts.
Because from the backyard of a house, okay?
Yes, sir.
Where the backyard fence goes, everything is gonna drain toward the road.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna look like this.
There'll be a slope.
It's gonna have to have rain.
Yes, sir, there'll be a slope.
And then in the front of the house, there is gonna be a swell-
That is correct.
The whole water.
That is correct.
That whole swell, every tree's got to come out.
Hmm, pretty, pretty much, yes.
It has to come out, because you're gonna dig it, and you can't dig those oak trees that deep and expect them to live.
Right, well-
But that's why we're, we're doing the preliminary, so we can work all those details out as far as how many trees will come out, and you'll come back and say, hey, this is what we, this is what we come up with, and this is what we wanna do, and then we'll, you, we can come back and do the same thing we're doing right now, and then y'all could have, uh, your, y'all's opinion again of what needs, whatever needs to be done.
I just need to clarify a question on something. You said there are five thousand square foot lots, you said there are twenty-five-
No, fif- fifteen thousand square foot lots.
Fifteen thousand.
Yes, sir.
So there's twenty-five hundred out of that, how much does the driveway and whatever you figure that's another, uh-
Same.
Huh?
About the same.
About twenty-five hundred, so that's five thousand? Um, so, so basically, God, you've got-
Yeah, tha- that's why it's thirty-three percent.
How much is the street then? What I'm trying to say is there's not sixty, thirty. By the time you take the street, which goes all the way through, it's not sixty, thirty. You're getting, it may be sixty impervious and thirty. I mean, but you, you-
No, with the lot, I don't, I don't think the lots have anything to do with the size of the street. The lot is the size of the lot.
I'm not talking, what, what I was referencing, when someone asked how much would be impervious cover, how much would be less for drainage?
Yes, it's six-
It was estimated that it would be sixty percent for drainage, thirty percent impervious cover. Those numbers don't, they don't even come close to working.
It's the other way around.
You've got a little street that's nothing but impervious cover, going through the middle of this, and you've got probably five thousand, you've got a third out of every lot that is impervious. So I'm just, all I'm trying to say is, just make sure the numbers are correct.
Yes.
And then that needs to be clarified, because-
Yeah, we, we need to make sure, we need to make sure that the property size-
There's trees there, trees can come and go all the time. It's nice if there's oats behind me, it's saving you from that.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
They're not a hundred-year-old oats. They'll, they'll be gone.
Yeah, but-
Well, again, this is our second attempt at figuring out a way for, for the drainage to work in this area, so we may be on plan three or four or five bef- before this-
I think the best thing to do, after sitting here listening to everybody, is have a third-party drainage study out there. Someone that is totally outside of the city and the development. That would ease everybody, both sides.
To be able to do that, we need to do the preliminary study so we can get that accomplished, and that's what we're talking about right there.
Yes, yeah, we should, yes.
So that's, that's what I was trying to, uh, put forward.
And that's the reason why we're doing this, so we can get that suggestion right there and pass it on to them, and get a thir- third study, third-person study on the drainage study, and then they'll come up with it, or, or, and then we move forward, and then we come up with a solution.
I'd be good with that, because that'd be the only way I'd, I would get behind this on, in all honesty.
Yeah, but you have to give them the-
The opportunity to do that, yes.
You have to continue to do it, so we can make it accomplished, not say, no, or table it, so they can't move forward with it at all.
Right.
So, so what was planning and zoning?
Let me, let me, let me add something.
Okay, can, can I have another time to talk, just tell them to stop for a minute?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm a staff, so-
That's what I understand, but it's taken up a meeting. But if you have three opportunities to talk, I just want one and a half.
I'm, I'm a staff.
That's fair.
Yeah. You go, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not for the, uh, uh, project, so I'm explaining the issues that you are bringing up. I'm a staff, I'm the city planner, so-
But you're coming back up for the same one. I've been here for five meetings.
So what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to suggest is that this particular meeting is not getting into the technicalities. We, we, the staff, we've done that, and so this is giving you the idea that so far, the engineering and other pr- processes have gone through, so give us the chance to sit more with the preliminary. And also, previously, we invited the neighborhood residents to come in. For instance, Mr. Magrow denied not coming, but here, he's asking those technicalities that he needs to know. Subs, if you, if, if you approve the preliminary plat, I would suggest that the neighborhood, those who wants to know much more details, like the research I'm suggesting is talking about, they're all coming, and we said, and we discussed that, so we reduce-
I think everybody has already had a chance to speak.
So that I reduce the back and forth, and the coverage, lot coverage, calculations, and the number of trees is gonna left on the street, all will be done before we come here, so we don't go back and forth. Thank you.
Yes, so-
All right. Ask if there's any more questions.
Any more, any more questions, go ahead and come up, that way we can keep track of who's, who's talking, and do our three minutes, and move on, and, and move forward.
I'm, I'm Lara, I'm Lara Wyssedal, and I live at eleven-twenty West Roads Avenue, and I just would like you guys during this feasibility study, or even before, if we don't approve this, that I want to ensure that we were the only area in Aransas Pass that was without electricity during the cold. From Beasley, Roads, Saunders, we were the only ones without it for thirteen hours. So that kind of asks whether or not we have a power issue in that area as well, so I need that looked at, please.
Mayor, Council, uh, not to tell you how to run your business, but I would, I would respectfully request that you give us our, our opportunity to address all of the items, the questions through staff, and if we get at that point, and, and the, the consensus is that there's still unanswered questions, then go to a third party. It's gonna bring on, uh, it's gonna be expensive if you go to a third party, and it may or may not be warranted. But give us our, our chance to work with and through staff, answer any and all questions, do our best to address any and all concerns, and work with and through staff to the council, to the citizenry, and I would respectfully request going that route, or at least attempt that route first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Dr. Spivak?
Yes.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Westalito Padua. Again, eighteen-twenty South Saunders. Made a couple of these meetings. I think I'm, um, I believe I'm the newest resident of Saunders at the moment. Been there for a little bit over a year. Uh, I get the preliminary, I get what we're trying to, trying to accomplish here, and same, I'm not opposed to development. Things good in moderation, and for the neighborhood to be at peace for it. My thing is, is preliminary, if, uh, I'm just trying to figure out why it's so hard to come up with a plan. Now, you want into our backyards, you want into our neighborhoods, we're just asking what you're gonna do to protect us. Now, if it were me, and if it were my money, I'd have been put the research in. Look, guys, this is how I'm gonna take care of you all. Give me a piece of your property, not your property, but a piece of your neighborhood, we're gonna share this here. And this is how we're gonna approach it. There is no, they don't know the law. I don't know the law. But when you say, I'm gonna approve this, it's a little scary still, even though it's preliminary, you're still giving them hope that one leg up, it, it seems like, without a plan to move forward for us. Um, I, I agree with Jason. My thing is, if these guys got a lot of money, and I know it's not just your responsibility, but if you come up here with the city, I respect this man, I'm not undermining him at all, I've heard him speak very intelligently about our, our area, you bring an engineer up to spit some numbers out, and then he crawls back on the numbers when we talk about streets running through. Um, again, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but if you want a preliminary, we sign off on it, if you can just come in here and say, this is how you're gonna take care of us too. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's still a lot of, go ahead and come up, go ahead. Still a lot of information that needs to come forward.
Tom Osmond, eight-thirty-three Roads, I live next to the property on Five Acre. We've seen, you, you're talking about drainage, flood drainage. We've had a ten-inch rain out here since we've been there, in a day. I know where that water goes, and when you put this plant in there, um, it's gonna go right by Rosie's and take a left, and the little pipe that they put in is not gonna handle more until you get, we're talking about W-dishes on this thing, put them on Roads or Sanders, uh, you gotta have it going downhill. It just can't go to a dam with a pipe in it when it get a big rain. Make the water flow. I can help you make it flow. I've done this before. I know where it goes. Where does the, uh, where does the new drain you put in the road, is that a storm sewer? Where does it, where does it end up? It goes to the ditch?
More likely to be this. More likely to be this.
Where does it hit the Gulf, or?
The bay.
Yeah, go ahead to the bay.
Uh, that's gonna be interesting. Gotta keep up with that, many more. You, you gotta do some, you're doing right, but just do more, think about where it goes.
I, I think your problem is not just the water, because just building new homes doesn't bring more water.
Well, yeah, it does, it gets more.
It's a rate, it's a rate of the water, so not that it's bringing more water, it's just bringing the water faster.
I'm from Houston originally. I've flooded, doing this stuff, um, and I, I thought my numbers were right, uh, but people were on boats. Thank you.
Speaking, speaking of Houston, I was in a, speaking of Houston, I was in a, in a drainage meeting, uh, not necessarily about this, but about drainage of the whole city, and that was, that was basically what needs to happen in Aransas Pass, we need some bayous through town, but, you know-
Yes, we do. What happens when the bayous fill up?
Yeah.
You go to bed.
Yeah.
Remember I ten?
Absolutely, yeah, I, I, I recall.
This is where we're at.
Yeah.
This is where we're at.
All right, are we done? No?
My name is Rosita Gonzalez, and we live on the corner of Saunders and Roads, and I keep hearing them saying about the flooding and the water up to Beasley, but guess what happens to that water when it stops? It doesn't stop there, it continues down Saunders, and guess where? It stops right in the corner of our ditch that we build, because the other people don't have ditches. And then across the street, or the Beasley's, uh, not, uh, Seal's house, they have no drainage, they have no ditch, and go look what happens when it rains real hard. The water is stopped right there at our corner. And when Ms. Laura called us last week for this meeting, my husband and I were discussing, we've come to every meeting, and, uh, are we doing this in vain? Because in the long run, I think they've already made up a decision and persuaded probably the, our leaders, you know, that they're going to build. And so why do we come to the meetings at our age, in our eighties already? But we're saying, maybe it makes a difference, like Mr. Gomez is saying, we have to look at this with serious, seriousness, you know, and look at the advantages and disadvantages. Do they disadvantage our way the advantages? And what about these poor people that are old? You know, we've lived there for a while, we pay our taxes, we sacrifice, because we're retired, most of us there, well, not some of them are very young too, but some of us that are retired, our paychecks don't go up. They're stay the same, but the taxes go up. Thank you.
My name is Fred Middlestead. We've been at eighteen-fifteen South Saunders for about five and a half years now, been through the floods, the droughts. I could probably spend three hours talking about infrastructure issues. Unfortunately, I only have three minutes. So what I wanna talk about is responsibility, because there seems to be some confusion about the definition of responsibility. I haven't talked to every single person sitting behind me, but I've talked to enough of them to say with confidence that there's very, very few people here who are opposed to development in principle, as long as it's done in a responsible manner. And that's what I'm not seeing here. What I'm seeing and hearing is, hey, we got this beautiful pink- And that's what I'm not seeing here, what I'm seeing and hearing is, hey, we got this beautiful pink elephant here that we wanna sell you. And it's not making sense to me. Responsibility, to me, means that the developer is willing to partner with the city to get this development done. I don't see that happening, um, you know, why is Seaman and Steve not jumping on Mr. Knight's proposal to come up with a study? It seems to me, before we exacerbate all of the existing problems which we have heard ad infinitum for the last five planning zoning commission and city council meetings, and here we are, back again, I mean, what are we, a year into this now? Two years into this, and we're still rehashing the same issues. So, I don't have a crystal ball, and I hope my neighbor John Samples is wrong, but all I see this coming to is another class action lawsuit. And I hope that doesn't happen, but it's up to you guys, you're the ones that define responsibility in the end.
Hi, I'm Joanne Buckmaster, seventeen thirty-one South Saunders, and I agree with everything that's been said, can't add much, I just want to reinforce that Rhodes is just insufficient for that many additional vehicles daily, and there's just, you know, there's just no solution to that, I don't see the road being improved, there's no money, as has been said, and the housing is just too dense for the existing character of our neighborhood. It's, you know, large lots in that area, yes, there are some smaller homes, but our neighborhood is just mainly large lots, and to have housing this dense, it just, it just would not fit with our character. And like Rosie said, we've just been coming to meeting after meeting, opposing this, and still it just keeps going down the highway, and I just, you know, it's pretty discouraging for it to just still be an issue two years later, so I'm opposed to this development, thank you.
Anybody else? I declare this public hearing closed. And now we're gonna go to consider an act on a preliminary plat application for a major subdivision requested by SEMA and Stephen Incorporated to develop thirty-four single-family dwelling lots, be it the property with legal description portion of farm lot two, land block A, Burton and Danforth subdivision, nine point seven-two acres, and Mike Exte, uh, block one lot, one R, four point two-nine acres, current zone is R ten, single-family dwelling district. Favor of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the preliminary plat so that that will give them the opportunity to get it right, because I, I don't agree with what's going on, I agree with everything that you're saying. But we, as a city, ha- are, have a responsibility also to these developers to give them the opportunity to make it right. And that's where I'm, that's where I'm at, so this, this'll give the developers the opportunity to, to make their plan fit with the surrounding areas, Rhodes, Beasley, maybe we'll get some, maybe we'll win the lottery and get drainage down roads, who knows? But I feel like we need to give them the opportunity to do, to do that, so the motion is on the floor.
Do I get a second?
Can you give me a second? Oh, oh, then there you go, well.
You can second, around.
You can, seven, you can.
Well, then I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote no, 'cause to me it looks like everybody's just as confused as I am, and I will not get behind this until I hear third-party drainage study.
Just one. Now, we're gonna go to public hearing, case number PZ twenty-two eleven dash twenty, is to open up the public hearing on a request by the City of Aransas Pass for amending to zoning ordinance number thirteen oh eight, part three, section two, section eleven, AG Agricultural District subsection, two hundred lot area requirements in reference to single-family lots.
Mayor and Council, uh, this portion has to do with, um, I guess we presented this before, it has to do with, um, the areas that are zoned, AG, Agri, and, uh, there are certain areas within these AG districts that are plotted, smaller lots, some twenty-five, some fifty. But for the current AG, it requires larger lots for development, so, uh, property owners and new developers, proposed developers who are coming in and having a challenge to use their existing plots, existing plots to develop. In so doing, we have decided that we give them the opportunity or the right to develop their properties based on the ILS seven A zoning district as plotted. In other words, in the zoning district itself, uh, the zoning ordinance itself, it says, any lots that are plotted already should be allowed to be developed as A's. And so, this is just to, um, add, um, an icing on the cake to finish it up. That is why we are before you to allow those plotted lots, uh, to be allowed to be developed as what is already plotted within the AG district. Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Counsel? Any questions?
No, no questions.
I declare this public hearing closed, now let's go to consider an act on request by the City of Aransas Pass for amend, amendment to zoning ordinance number thirteen oh eight, part three, section eleven, AG Agricultural District subsection, minus two hundred lot area requirements in reference to single-family lots. Favor the council?
I make a motion for, to amend the zoning ordinance number one three zero eight, part three, section eleven, Agricultural District subsection, two hundred lot area requirements in reference to single-family lots.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we're gonna go to case number ESA twenty-two twelve dash zero seven, public hearing on request by Brian Willis for ESA approval to develop one single-family site located in an ESA District two at South Bay Estates, Aransas Pass Lot two, located by State Highway three sixty-one, Port Aransas Causeway, AKA Redfish Bay Causeway in Aransas Pass, Texas, Nuaces County Property ID two zero zero one one three four five six.
Yes, so, Mayor and Council, uh, this is an application, uh, by the applicant, uh, purposefully for environmentally sensitive area permit. So, this is along the causeway, um, and, uh, he has to go through all the environmental, uh, processes and, uh, Amica of Engineer, uh, Research Report, to make sure, um, it does not, it's a single-family dwelling that he's gonna put up, and so, um, they have reviewed his, uh, report on environmental, uh, analysis, and they are okay with it, and everything is okay. It went to the Environmental Review Board, and they have approved it, they voted to recommend approval, and that is what is before you today.
Any questions from the public?
We have Mr. Willis, um, who's calling in for the meeting, um, I'm dialing him now, for any questions you may have.
You have any questions?
Do, do we have a question, somebody on the phone?
Mr. Willis and Mr. Chris, are you there?
Yes, Chris was calling.
Yeah, it's five minutes.
Okay. Um, we are to your agenda topic, um, so, I know, we were notified you wanted to call in.
Yes.
Yes.
So that is the applicant, he's out of state, if you have any questions.
Then we're good.
Okay.
I declare that public hearing closed, and we're gonna go to consider an act on request by Brian Willis for ESA approval to develop one single-family site located in an ESA District two at South Bay Estates, Aransas Pass Lot two, located on State Highway three sixty-one, Port Aransas Causeway, AKA Redfish Bay Causeway in Aransas Pass, Texas, Nuaces County Property ID two zero zero one one three four five six, or three four five eight.
Yeah, eight. I make a motion to approve the request by Brian Willis for, to develop one single-family site located in an ESA District two at South Bay Estates, Aransas Pass Lot two, located on State Highway three sixty-one, Port Aransas Causeway in Aransas Pass, Texas, Nuaces County Property ID two zero zero one one three four five eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're gonna go to case number F two twenty-two eleven dash nineteen, it's, uh, open public hearing on rezoning request by the City of Aransas Pass from AG Agricultural District to GB General Business District of the city-owned property located at the corner of East Maddox Avenue and Huff Street, Aransas Pass Block six five nine, lots seventeen to thirty-two, one point two acres in Aransas Pass, Texas.
Yes, so, Mayor and Council, uh, this is an application that, uh, has already come before you previously based on the follows rezoning application and development of the multifamily use with the retail below and the residential on top. The property next to it is, um, currently agriculture, and, uh, it will create a spot zone, and so in order to correct that, we tabled the follow requests, which will be coming subsequently, uh, to make sure that property, the triangle property that is city-owned also be zoned GB, so it will become contiguous to a GB reason, and that is what is before you today.
Any questions, public?
Anybody else, two forty-four South Commercial, I'm all in favor of, uh, of progress, uh, this prosperity, what got us here, is not gonna get us there, this is the beginning of getting us there, going ahead and making decisions, changing some zonings if we have to, to go ahead and getting around problems, this is the beginning of getting us there, and I greatly would like to support this, this change of zoning. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions? Counsel. Okay, well, I declare this public hearing closed, and we're gonna go to consider an act on rezoning request by the City of Aransas Pass from AG Agricultural District to GB General Business District of the city-owned property located at the corner of East Maddox Avenue and Huff Street, Aransas Pass, BOK six fifty-nine, lots eleven to thirty-two, one point two acres in Aransas Pass, Texas.
I make a motion to approve the rezoning request by the City of Aransas Pass from Agricultural District to General Business District of the city-owned property located at the corner of East Maddox and Huff Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, we're gonna go to the city manager, which is considering an act on ordinance granting rezoning requests submitted by Furlough Harbor Equity LLC. Which is considering an act on a rezoning request by Furlough Harbor Equity LLC from AG Agricultural District to GB General Business District with a variance to mix residential use with commercial use to develop multifamily condominiums with retail spaces on the first floor on the properties located at the northeast and southeast corners of Pacific Street and East Maddox Avenue, Aransas County Property, DS one two nine four zero, one two nine four one, four seven nine oh four, and one two nine one seven, being Aransas Pass, BOK six fifty-nine lots thirteen to sixteen, and block six fifty-eight, lot one, in Aransas Pass, Texas, tabled on ten seventeen twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so, this is the application that is a follow-up of the, uh, city-owned property that you just, uh, approved the rezoning. Uh, this case was tabled on tenth, uh, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, to allow the rezoning to be, uh, consistent with the general business in that area, and so now that the rezoning of the city property has been approved, I will recommend that you act on this request, because, um, on the, on October seventeenth, you discussed it, and so, this is to act on it, thank you.
Any questions? Favor the council?
Oh, is it a public hearing? Okay. I make a motion to approve the rezoning request by Furlough Harbor Equity LLC from Agricultural District to General Business District with a variant to mix residential use with commercial use to develop multifamily condominiums with retail space on the first floor on the properties located at the northeast and southeast corners of Pacific Street and East Maddox Avenue in Aransas Pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're gonna go to consider an act on rescheduling the city council meeting on January sixteen, twenty twenty-three to Tuesday, January seventeen, twenty twenty-three, due to Martin Luther King Junior Day.
I make a motion to reschedule the city council meeting on January sixteenth to January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then we go to consider an act on resolution approving tax sale properties, we, number S thirteen, dash one zero four zero TX, account number three five six seven six, lots nineteen and twenty, town of Aransas Pass, AKA lots nineteen and twenty, block three twenty-one, City of Aransas Pass, and Patrual County, Texas, a bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gotless LLC in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. He's coming.
There he is.
You're up.
My apologies for walking late, uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, is this the first one, number three?
Yes.
This one is just, uh, land. Yes, this one is just land, I believe it's landlocked, there should be a picture of the property behind.
There is a manufactured home.
On the.
No, that's the second one.
I think it's the second one.
I couldn't get it to pull up, where exactly is it at?
I could be wrong.
Uh, well, let's see.
I don't have a picture for this one, other than what you have.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
I think one has a manufactured home that's been condemned.
That's the second one.
That's the second one.
I can't get any pictures to come, that's the second one.
Yes, that one. That's the.
That's not.
Is that the first one we're talking about?
The second one.
No.
Okay, let's go to the one.
Oh, we, okay.
I'm sorry, I, which one were we on?
That's a, there's a burnt structure.
Okay, on that one. Yes.
That's the one that we're on right now, that's account number three five eight seven six, is that three oh two North Saunders?
Okay, the first one is art number seven three on your, on your list, that's thirty-five eight seventy-six, correct.
Um, the picture, I can't read it, does that say three oh two North Saunders on there?
Yes.
Okay, there is a burnt structure.
Okay.
And that has been on the demo docket, so if someone wants to purchase the land, great, but I would ask that it be conditioned that the structure be demolished at a certain time period.
Right.
If not, it's in the taxing entities, and the taxing entities would move forward, demolish again.
So, do we know if there's, I, I can't get anything to come up, so is there? So, is there city services... Okay, wait a minute. The property has water and sewer access. Okay. I'm reading that. How big is this property? Three lots? Two lots?
Two lots.
Two lots, okay. So, it's 50 foot?
Fifty by fifty.
Okay.
Are they 50-foot lots?
Well, I... Yeah, if he wants, if, if we give him a timeline on demolition and cleanup?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, if he tears it down, I'll be okay with that.
Yeah, within six months?
Whatever you want.
Three months?
So, you would table it?
Uh, 30 days?
Table it, and then I'll contact the gentleman and get an agreement for him that he intends to table, to tear it down within the time the city would prefer, correct?
That, I mean, that structure is actually the next structure set for the Building Boards and Standards and Appeals hearing. It's set for February. If the Building Board of Standards and Appeals orders the structure demolished, the property owners and holders of mortgages would have 30 days to demolish it. And then, so it, the taxing entities would have it demolished within about 60 days.
Okay.
With an extra 15, so 75 days. That's if we went through the process of going through the Building Board of Standards and Appeals. I don't know if this property owner knows that there's a burnt structure on it.
I don't know if he knows there is one on this one. I know he knows about the mobile home on the second one. And it's his intention to remove that. But this one, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I would approve the sale with the exception of him knowing he's got to demolish this building within 30 days. So... Okay, well, let's see. I, I don't know why it's not... I can't get my thing to go back to the beginning, so... Where are we? What number are we on?
Seven, three.
Seven, three?
Yeah.
Seven, three, yeah. Make a motion to... Go ahead.
Mayor, I just want to point out that if we can get notice from the property owner as soon as the, the proposed property owner, as soon as possible, because we are prepping the case with the Building Board of Standards and Appeals for February, and it costs several, a couple of thousands of dollars for us to get that through the process.
Okay.
I'm going to halt the process, knowing that this may be... I don't want to halt it because it's so much work, but if the council approves them moving forward and subject to a demolition, then I'll halt.
Um, I, I can contact him and let him know that their approvals of what the council has requested. Technically, though, this is just a straight-up-and-down vote to accept his bid.
So, we can't put the stipulation on there?
No.
No?
No. Not... The, unfortunately, the, the property tax code only allows it a straight-up or down. Now, it could be a part of your deliberations, and it could be something you want assurances of ahead of time, but it's not something I can hold him to.
Okay.
If that makes...
Right, I understand what you're saying. I think it's fair for the proposer to know what the expectation is.
I could do that.
Okay. I make a motion to approve tax sale property suit number S131040TX, account number 35876, lots 19 and 20, town of Aransas Pass, lots 19 and 20, block 321, City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas, with a bid offer submitted by Cooper Gottlick LLC in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So, just to be clear, you're approving the sale without demolition timeline?
Well, I would like to have a demolition timeline, but...
But you're going to, so you're not having a demolition timeline? You're going to just approve the sale?
Well, I would like to have a demolition timeline. That's what we just discussed, but he just said we couldn't really do that.
Well, you either have to accept or reject the bid.
Well, no, I'm accepting the bid.
Okay, so he doesn't have a demolition timeline?
Well, we can tell him. We can still tell him.
We can tell him, but...
We can, we can tell him, but...
You're right.
It, it is the... Yeah, so my off, my motion is still on the floor. We can still tell Mr. Cooper what our expectations are.
Okay, I'll send notice to him if you purchase this.
Okay, I still have to shop it to the school district and the county. You're the first one.
So, you're accepting his offer without demolition? I understand what you're doing. I just want to make sure you understand what you're doing. So, I can halt my legal proceedings because we're not going to require him to demolish.
Well, my, my thought process behind this was if we allow him to buy this property, that's going... He's going to take care of the demolition opposed to the city that cost us $15,000, $20,000?
He, the proposer, the bidder, has not agreed to demolish the structure.
Correct. No, I under, I understand that. He, this... I also know who this person is. He has bought other properties. He has built homes that people are living in. He produces a good building, a good development. So, this particular bid submitter is not one that sits on properties. He does something with them.
Now, we're going to go to consider an act and resolution approving tax sale property suite number S-11-1086TX.
I don't think we...
I don't think there was a final vote.
There was not a final vote.
Yeah, a second.
Did you second?
Second.
Oh, oh, sorry.
It's already done.
Sorry.
Was it?
Was it?
My bad.
Okay. All right, that one's done. Next.
We already approved it.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go to consider an act and resolution approving tax sale property suite number S-11-1086TX, or 88TX, account number 171325, lot 14, town of Aransas Pass, AKA lot 14, block 748, City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas. A bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gottlick LLC in the amount of $6,300.
Thank you, Mayor. Attached to his bid form, just for the council's information, $6,300 is 30% of the land value, and he did write that he understands the improvement is condemned, and he will remove it for the city.
Well, I make a motion to approve tax resale property suit number S111088TX, account number 71325, block 14, block 748, original town site to the City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas. The property is located on South 12th Street, um, and the, there is a, currently a structure on the property that will be disposed of at Cooper Gottlick LLC's expense.
$6,300, right?
Oh, for $6,300, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to consider an act and approve a resolution establishing streetlight and, street lighting and street lighting distance requirements.
Mayor and Council, this item has been discussed in a couple of work sessions, and it's back to you, following the last work session, for final approval, if you agree. It provides some distance between the streetlights in, throughout the city. Right now, we have no such a policy.
So, it's 200 feet, is that what it is?
I thought it's 300 feet.
Uh, I'm reading two. At the end of all, cul-de-sac and... What? What'd you say?
Yeah, 300, it's 300 feet.
Oh, okay, I was looking at number two. All right.
And 300 feet is what was discussed at the last work session also.
Correct.
I move to approve a resolution establishing street lighting and street lighting distance requirements.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to go to case number ESA 2212-08, considering act on a request from ESA Review Board to amend Section 6 dot 1 dot D of the ESA Ordinance 2020 dash 4319.
Yeah, so, uh, this ordinance came before you the previous month, and it was about the ESA notification of landowners. You discussed about the 500 feet between District One and District Two. And there was a second portion of it. So, we have maintained what you recommended, that the 500 should be on both for District One and District Two. However, the very bottom part has a statement that the notification has to be the responsibility of the applicant and stuff like that. We, mostly, the city takes charge of that with other commissions and boards. So, we want that to be uniform with this one. And so, we've canceled that portion out and made the statement that the notification of landowners and records shall be filed immediately in the board's office and our public record. Simple as that. And that's what is before you today. So, we've maintained what you suggested the last time, and it looks very appropriate at this time.
I make a motion to approve or to amend section... Is that where we're on? Six, seven, six?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve and to amend, or to amend, ESA Section 6.6D of the ESA Ordinance 2020-4319.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to go to consider an act and approve the ordinance providing for an automatic increase in water rates pursuant to Section 29-23, 27C and Section 29-28A, B, and C of the City Code of Ordinances as a result of an increase in rates by the city water vendors and provided an effective date.
Good evening. So, basically, we're giving our annual rate increase from our water provider and the, the attached resolution or ordinance. The attached ordinance has the breakdown as to what's going to change. We're changing the volumetric rate for our customers in accordance to the increase that we're facing from, from our water provider. So, right there is, basically, if you'll see, the residential and senior rates are the same. Where the senior citizens get a discount is on their base rate. The volumetric rate is the same for all, for all consumers. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance providing for an automatic increase in water rates pursuant to Section 29-27C and Section 29-28ABC of the City Code of Ordinances as a result of an increase in the rates by the city's waters vendors and providing for an effective date.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to go to consider an act of amending...
Before you go on, how, can a motion be retracted? How is that done? Or can it not be?
Is it, is it already a motion of voted on?
Yes.
They already have to be a motion to rescind? Or a motion to reconsider? It depends on the timing of the motion.
Okay.
And the two actual very technical legal processes, so we need more information to tell you whether it's a rescind or a reconsideration.
It's just, go ahead.
Okay, it is considered an act of amending the lease agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and Captain Caddick.
Mr., Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an agreement with Captain Caddick. As you know, with bulkhead issues months ago, the building that they were in had to be demolished. And we have temporary buildings out there. We are decreasing, I'm summarizing, we're decreasing the amount that we are charging them. And that's the purpose for this legislation, if, if you agree. We're working on some additional issues tied to this, but not tied to this particular legislation. This gives some assistance as far as what they're working with out there at this point, which is somewhat less than what they had originally.
I move to amend the lease agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and Captain Caddick.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And now, we're going to go to Development Services, which is considering an act on approving the survey proposal for the Little League Concession Stand of Mordura Group LLC for $2,950.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, so this is for the concession stand for the Little League. Originally, when Mordura proposed or made the proposal, they were assuming it's currently a two-story building on, basically a building on stilts, and they were assuming it's going to be the same one. When we met as a committee, we really wanted to bring down, down to grade, so we had to order some additional surveying that wasn't included in the proposal just to see if we can meet that floodplain elevation, still getting insured, but not be two stories up in the air. So, the, the contract is $2,950. So, that's just for the surveying to see if we can lower down that concession stand. Also for ADA purposes, aesthetic purposes, and things of that sort, so...
I move to approve the survey and proposal for a Little League concession stand from Mordura Group LLC for $2,950.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to go to consider an act on the recommendation by KFA to award the American Rescue Plan ARP Water and Sewer Package to Contract to J.J. Fox Construction Incorporated the amount of $665,720.
Yeah, this is a sewer project. It's going to start from the alley between, it's actually on McClung, so on the alley between 11th and 12th Street, all the way to Avenue A. It's going to be about eight manholes, fiberglass manholes, not brick, just for the record. It'll be fiberglass manholes. It'll have some 12-inch line, some 8-inch line in there. It's going to serve about 37 connections in there. So, there's been quite a bit of growth down that street, so we're hoping to get more with this infrastructure. But we did have an alternate, so after this project is done, they're going to backfill it. Of course, they're going to have that ugly trench down the road. Well, proposals to actually do a 2-inch overlay on top of that. We have the equipment, we have the experience to do that, so of course, we did an alternate. I think the lowest bid was $162,000 for that. We're probably going to do it for under $120,000, and that's on the high side. So, I'm pretty sure we're going to be under that. And so, once they finish that project, our street crew will come in and do that 2-inch overlay.
So, this was not a bid proposal? It was a recommendation by an engineering firm? Who's Kay, Kay Freeze is an engineer?
Is the engineer that, that's, that's managing the, the project?
Okay, they're over the whole American Rescue Plan?
Yes, correct. And J.J. Fox was the lowest bidder for the...
Okay, so it was a bid?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, just, just making sure, because the wording sounds, sounds to me like we're just allowing Kay Freeze to pick the contractor.
No, no, it's, it's a...
Okay, okay.
Kay Freeze gave a recommendation letter. So, when we open bids, we get the lowest bidder, of course. But the engineer has to go through their due diligence to see, make sure they're not disbarred, make sure they have a good relationship. So, so that way, if they're the lowest bidder, are they qualified to even do the work? So, once, once they get their due diligence done, they'll make a recommendation, say, hey, let's go with this contractor. They were the lowest bid, we checked their references, checked their history, and this is our recommendation.
Okay.
So, that's what you guys are proving, the recommendation letter for them, for J.J. Fox to do the work, not Kay Freeze.
And no change orders, right?
That's always the goal.
I make a motion to award the American Rescue Plan Water and Sewer Package Two contract to J.J. Fox Construction in the amount of $665,720.
And no change orders.
And no change orders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, it is considered an act and approve a change order for Lee's third contract in the LLC. Now, it is considered an act on approving a change order for Lester Contracting LLC for an additional thirty calendar days for the Highland and Johnson Drainage Improvement Project at no cost.
Yeah, so it's Lester, not Lester. So, Lester had had a change order before. We added some more work to the projects. It was, we felt like it was necessary. We added a hundred and forty days to that project. They came requesting additional seventy-five days. They did, they did state that there was rain days, that they have groundwater issues and they have water lines that ran into. The rain days, I can a hundred percent agree, 'cause we dealt with the same rain days. So, they, they stated they had nine rain days. I was willing to give them three days for each rain day, that's twenty-seven, maybe even thirty. The groundwater was addressed during the pre-construction meeting. And also, the water lines, that's just kind of part of excavating. You're always gonna run into water lines, gas lines, fiber optics, it's gonna be there. So, I did tell them, you guys are a fair counsel, that I will let them complete their case if they wanted to convince you for the additional days. And they are here represented, so you guys wanna come up? Yeah, so I'll let them speak and try to justify the additional days, and it'll be up to you guys, too.
Mayor, Council, I'm Trent Tagby with Lester Contracting, Vice President. We did ask for additional seventy-five days. We were, we were given a change order for a hundred and forty days. Those hundred and forty days were made up of days while we were waiting on change orders to be approved for conditions that changed from the original bid that we, we gave the city, what we bid on. There was some sewer services running through the storm main, some pipe sizes changed. The main changed from thirty-six inch to forty-two. And the street subgrade ended up being cement stabilized subgrade, which was not on the original plans that we bid. So, scope of the work changed. Those hundred and forty days that we were given on change order two were made up of where we stopped the project to figure out these other issues, and then where we resumed, and then we found some other issues. So, those hundred and forty days basically got us back to the ninety-day contract time with the original contract. We asked for the additional seventy-five days to give us some time to make up for those additional things that had to be changed and we ran into that changed from the original scope. We are out there working, we have worked through the holidays, we are, all the storm sewers in. The road crew is on site today. They are milling up the cement stabilized. We have limestone base coming in at the end of this week to put the streets, put the street back. We're asking for an ex, I appreciate David's offer for the thirty days. But if I could, if we could ask for additional days to put the completion date at, at March first. The only reason I'm asking for this is because weather conditions, we are in the winter season. To put down hot mix, we have to have the proper temperature. I don't wanna come back and have to ask y'all for more days. I think if we can get those additional days to March first, I believe we're gonna be finished way before that. But I would like to ask for more days now, so I'm not back up here pleading and begging y'all for more days at that time. We did have some issues that we ran into out there. Groundwater was not so much the issue, it was more of the water coming out of the pipes after the rains. We missed a lot of good working days because of the change, the changes in the scope of the project. So, if y'all would consider approving us till March first, we would greatly appreciate it.
One thing I do wanna reiterate, whichever you guys decide, it is no cost, no increase or anything. So, if you go with thirty days or the seventy-five days, it would be at zero cost.
Can we go with something in between, like forty-five days?
Do you know what the liquidated damage amount is per day for failure to meet the deadline?
One thousand per day.
So, the project is complete except for the pavement and the roads?
Correct, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay.
We're working on the limestone basis. We anticipate having that all in by Tuesday of next week. And then working on getting the paving done and scheduled. But I'm worried about cooler weather. I know it's warm right now, but we are in the winter month.
When does the additional days begin?
Their contract was up December eighteenth. So, thirty days would put them, well, January seventeenth, seventeenth. So, if you just do thirty days, they have to finish by the seventeenth.
Oh.
Yeah, so they're asking for additional past the seventeenth.
So, it'd be January, what did you say? Seventeenth, eighteenth?
Yes, correct.
February seventeenth.
So, February seventeenth? So, whatever that is, sixty days?
Yeah, somewhere around there. But it shouldn't take that long. Sure? Should it take that long? Sixty days, good with you? What do you want?
Just the days that they're asking for.
Seventy-five?
Yeah, no.
Probably most likely, y'all guys will be done before March first.
They're, they're asking for seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, but on the, on the change order, I'm recommending thirty. So, but you, you have to leave me to go either way.
Says thirty, yeah, that's what.
We're, we're not planning on leaving the job site or anything. I'm just, we've been here from the very beginning. We've worked through all of this with the city and with David, his team, and everybody's been great. We've worked very good with everybody. We're just asking, so I'm not back up here pleading. If, if it does come a month of rain, or we get two weeks of cooler weather, I'm not back up here asking for, 'cause the temperatures have to be fifty and rising for us to put down hot mix.
The surface, the first surface, it's not the ambient that's the rising, but ground has to be cooler. Sometimes the ground could be cooler in the ambient. But I can't vouch, they haven't worked very hard. I think they had, like, most of the trees up there once, and they've been, they've been growing and growing.
Yeah, but the additional time is thirty days, right?
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay, well, and if it takes longer, would. Then, then they can come back? Okay.
Okay, favor of the council?
Are you ready? I make a motion to approve the change order for Lester Contracting LLC for an additional thirty calendar days for the Highland and Johnson Drainage Improvement Project at no cost.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're gonna go to consider an act on removing Mary Water City Secretary as a signatory from all check bank accounts.
This, just to update our signature cards, Mary was our signer in all our bank accounts. So, this is just for my lady to remove her. We're gonna be keeping myself, Ashley, and the Judge Henry on the signature cards.
I make a motion to remove Mary Juarez City Secretary as a signatory from all city's bank accounts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're gonna go to, they asked on the considered act to approve the police chief to award the public safety dock bids to coastal peers and docks LLC an amount of one fourteen, eight thirty-four, forty-nine to be tabled to another meeting to where they have the contract.
Mayor and Council, the contract was not included with the submission on the agenda items. We wanna make sure that all the documents are present before you consider.
Okay, all right. So, I make a motion to table these dock bid for the Harbor Master Building?
The docks.
Docks?
Yeah.
Docks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, we're gonna go to City Council Staff Announcements, which is a workshop, January twenty-third, twenty-three, per standard and procedures, which is will be David, Public Works Director, and building fees, which will be Joseph Garza for building officials.
That's fluid, of course, that could change. We could get rid of those and add others, that remains to be seen. But that's what's, that's what we're looking at at this point.
Now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, invite that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Any comments?
No, nothing? Yes.
Hector Rios, two forty-four South Commercial. Happy birthday, Ms. Greggs. God bless you, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Hector.
Okay, now, we're gonna go into executive session, which is section five-five-one dot zero seven of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice and.
Y'all were supposed to bring it.
You kept that really quiet.
I'm waiting. Happy birthday to me. Happy birthday to me.